I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is October 26th. This is Independent School District 832, the Monamita School Board. Please join me and rise for the collective legion. Full call of attendance?
Done.
Approval of the agenda, do you have a motion?
I'm moved.
Director Regan?
Second.
Seconded by Director Domon. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda? Do you have a motion?
I'm moved.
By Director Peterson?
Second.
Seconded by Director Domon, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Presentations.
We're going to start with Anne Gary presenting our Teacher of the Year, Lisa Matthews.
I'm Anne Gary. I am the head of the Teacher of the Year Committee, and I'm a Spanish teacher at the high school and president of the Monamita Education Association. And on behalf of the Monamita Teacher of the Year Committee and the Monamita Education Association, I want to thank the board and Superintendent Duffrin for taking time to recognize our Teacher of the Year. It's a real pleasure to be here tonight. Selecting the Monamita Teacher of the Year starts each spring with nominations made by colleagues in our schools. After the nomination process, each nominated teacher is asked to share information regarding their philosophy of teaching, professional highlights, and what they see as pressing issues in education today. Then a committee made up of former Monamita Teachers of the Year reviews the materials that are submitted and meets to discuss the nominees, and from that pool, a Teacher of the Year is selected. In the fall, our local Teacher of the Year, Lisa Matthews, will be nominated, or is, has been nominated, for the statewide Teacher of the Year recognition through Education Minnesota. I am so happy to recognize Lisa as the 2023-2024 Teacher of the Year. She's in her 32nd year of teaching at Monamita and is a beloved kindergarten teacher at Wildwood Elementary. During her time at Monamita, she's had countless leadership roles and has served in just about every committee that exists. And we all know that the elementary's have lots of committees. Lisa also impressively has served as a mentor in our own Monamita New Teacher Mentor Program. She has been a mentor and a cooperating teacher to college students pursuing careers in teaching, and has been a mentor in the Monamita High School Students in, sorry, Psychology Field Experience class. Psychology Field Experience is a high school class that gives high schoolers the opportunity to have hands-on experience inside the elementary classroom. Last year, a student that worked with Lisa in her kindergarten class invited her to attend the Future Educator's Breakfast and cited that working with Lisa was transformative and an inspiration for her future career as a teacher. As you can imagine, Lisa has touched the lives of countless colleagues, students, and families. Margaret Pitsenbarger, who nominated Lisa, wrote one of truly my favorite lines of all times when talking about a teacher. Everyone needs a kindergarten teacher like Lisa. I reached out to the kindergarten team at Wildwood and asked them to share some words about Lisa. Her team repeatedly uses words like welcoming and kind to describe her. She makes colleagues and students feel welcomed and valued. She is professional, forward-thinking, and a leader who is respected by her team and her colleagues at Wildwood. And Gina Warren, who has worked with Lisa for over 20 years, said, "Working with Lisa has been amazing. Lisa is a team player who works for the best outcomes for all kids. Her kindness in her class, as a colleague, and as a friend are second to none. I feel very honored to be here tonight as Lisa is recognized as Teacher of the Year." She's gonna, I believe, say a few words.
Thank you. Hello, thank you. I am so honored to be here tonight and grateful to be a recipient of this award. It has been a true privilege being a teacher in Monamita where I can help shape, encourage, and motivate my young learners while creating a joyful start to their school experience. Thank you for the acknowledgement this evening.
And we're going to take, we're going to take a picture together, but I first want, I want to jump in and I have had the honor of being able to come into your classroom and observe you. And you are just like, you're, it's masterful what you do in that classroom with students. And I feel, you can feel the warmth walking into your classroom and see the learning. And, and those students are so engaged, and I could never do that myself, just how engaged they are and not squirming around, they're right there with you. So I, I was not at all surprised when I heard that you were the Teacher of the Year. I thought that was a perfect choice because you do, you work magic in your classroom, and I've seen it multiple times. So congratulations, yes.
I just wanted to say thank you for all of your years of service. And it takes somebody very special to be a kindergarten teacher and to do it for that long and do it so well and do it with a smile, and you have touched so many thousands of lives. Your energy, even though I didn't have, my four kids didn't have the pleasure of being in your class, I only wish that they had. I feel like every time I have seen you at Wildwood, you just exude this very welcoming. The way that that was said was so perfect, just very welcoming and warm, and that's why we want our kids to start school-loving learning. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to echo that too, even though, the same, I had the same feeling, even though my boys didn't have you. Just everything that we hear about you and witness, it's just so impressive and really just so appreciative that we have you as part of the team.
Thank you.
So I appreciate the way that you take your awards so humbly. I loved your opening back-to-school speech to the rest of your peers and colleagues, it was fabulous. But what I love about this award is it comes from those who do the work, right? It comes from those on the ground, so it's even more meaningful, hopefully for you, but definitely as I think about the awards many of our teachers receive in this district, when your peers can recognize the great work that you're doing, that says a lot about the work that you do. So I really thank you for all that, that you've done for students on behalf of our district.
Thanks Jenny.
Let's get a picture.
Okay.
Other one, so.
This is a fun night for us, so we have another teacher recognition. And Jackie Collins is coming up, our principal of our middle school, is going to talk a little bit about Ryan Collins.
My little brother, as we like to tell sixth graders, but it's really not true. Don't tell everybody Fletcher that it's not true. Um, I feel honored to be able to recognize Ryan tonight. He is one of our sixth grade Minnesota Studies teacher, also yearbook advisor, and he's admiring Alice's abilities over there. And has been a teacher, this is the start of year 23, correct? Here in Monamita. Oh, I'm, I'm clicking. Oh, you're clicking, oh, he told me to tell him the, but go ahead. This has been a wonderful start to the year at the middle school. And as you are aware, we are opening up with a lot of new and different and very exciting programs and systems and structures that we have in place as part of the redesign process that we were working through. And one of those features is our class referred to as Middle School Success. And students take this class on an every-other-day schedule, an A/B schedule, and it is a full class hour. And Middle School Success speaks to learner agency as part of our strategic plan. And the learning and opportunities that the students are having on their every-other-day experience is largely a product of the work that Ryan did over the summer preparing the curriculum for Middle School Success. Ryan came to me in the spring of the year and said, "What's this Middle School Success all about?" He is a planner and he wants to be prepared. And I gave him some resources and said, "Here's some things that I have." And we kind of shared a bit of a vision and some experience that I had from a previous district. And he took it and ran, and ran very fast and very hard, and he's still running, it's like a marathon. But he has single-handedly led this work. And he now has a few colleagues that are working very hard with him. And they are providing for the entire school, the curriculum and program and opportunities for our students. And I would just, would be lost without the work that you have done. And so we greatly appreciate it, and it is of huge benefit to the students. And we have heard a lot of really good feedback on how they are utilizing that time and the skills that they're learning as part of that, that are not necessarily explicitly taught in their other courses. The class, in the upper left-hand corner here, this is a slide from the program. And it is, the class is designed to make the students the best that they can be. Teaching them how to be students and how to be agents of their own learning. Also listed there for you are some of the topics that have been explored and future topics, and some quotes from the parents and staff members' feedback that we received during conferences. And then finally, we have spent, we've had many conversations and spent time at the middle school talking about collective teacher efficacy and the impact that it makes on student success. And it is all of the staff coming together to work for the benefit of the students. And the biggest impact is when they can work as a team. And I just want to acknowledge Ryan during this month where we are talking about leadership. He truly is that. And he is the bits leadership at the middle school on so many levels and does it with a very humble smile. And he is appreciated by everyone, and the students love him. And I hope he has another 23 years in, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
We're going to take a picture with you too, but we have to say, I know I have things to say because so I have had the pleasure, of course, of going into your classroom to observe you and listen to your stories. And you're just so, I mean, beyond Middle School Success, just you as a, as a teacher being in your classroom. Once again, I just, I always enjoy myself and it's hard for me to leave in, in general. But I've also had the benefit of having my child in your classroom. And I have, I know I've told you this, and I think I've told your, I think I've told your principal this too. Your emails that you send are just, are, you know, with just a general email letting parents know what to expect from their seventh grader, you know, here's what's about to happen. I mean, it just shows how much you know middle school kids and how much you appreciate them. And that comes through for the kids, and it comes through for parents, and I just, I'm really thankful for that. So I, and so I'm really excited that you're in charge of Middle School Success too. Because that just, I mean, that just means that all kids are going to benefit from your understanding of who they are as people and also as learners. So I'm really, I'm really thankful for this.
I'm going to jump on to that because when she mentioned emails, I had planned to mention your emails. I have the benefit of my sons having had your class and they loved you, of course. But you also would, you've always sent out the emails about our great state of Minnesota and all the historical places to go. And it is just, it's, it's this treasure trove of what every, I think everyone would be interested in knowing about these places. So in addition to all the other things that have been said, I think you benefit the parents in that way too. So thank you so much, and I know everyone else.
So I just want to say thank you, and we talked last week at conferences in the hallway, even though I, you don't have any of my children right now, every time I see you at the middle school, I stop and try and make sure and say hi. I feel as though what you have done for students in the middle school, and I was a middle school teacher for a long time, and that's a really tough job. And it's also a really exciting job because there's so much growth in that time. But one of the things that I really noticed as a parent, when my son was going through middle school and Minnesota Studies was, you know, learning all about our state and all of that, and US history, everything really about social studies, you brought that history to life. And so made it really, not only learning about it, about what happened in the books and in the curriculum and standards, but just making that alive. And that was evident the very first time, as a parent, I think it was like an open house night. Parents walked in and you had a cahoot for everyone as we jumped, got in. We were immediately being tested on our knowledge of, and so it was just really engaging and brought it to life. And so that to me is what just is exciting for kids learning in your classroom. You just make it really relevant and very high engagement, and in middle school, even better. So thank you so much, Ryan, appreciate all your work.
We've had similar positive experiences in our family, but I know that in the past, I think you served on the city council, your city council, right?
I currently serve in the city council and still are, yep. I was re-elected last November, so I'm on my second term, thank you.
For the last time you were in front of us, you were telling us all about your travels around Minnesota after your, yeah. And I remember that presentation so clearly because of the excitement you brought. But that, and now this work that you've done really shows us how teachers do not have a nine-month contract. They work 12 months a year, right? And you just really show that in the work that you do because it benefits everyone. And the summer work often is not paid, and it's for your own passion. And, and I appreciate the extra time you dedicate to the students of our district. And just want the public to know that, yes, it's a nine-month contract, you're in that building nine months a year, but the summer is a really important time for rejuvenation and for deeper learning and taking on these new projects. So I appreciate the time you took this summer to do that on behalf of our students, thank you very much.
Yeah, Alice will tell you where to go. Yeah, and then maybe come forward a little bit. Okay, we're gonna shift all the way down here. So everyone can go. Yes, I can. Okay. I think we're ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Yeah, it was wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you. Please have you. I will, absolutely.
Alright, now we're ready for the report.
Yes, so I'm gonna start off with Wildwood. At Wildwood, since our last meeting, they've had their fun run and they've had the Zephyr Zone event. And both of these events were big hits, and I think that's because students really like to like have fun with their friends and be active, which is a principle that's true also in the high school. Because all of our events were like, people are doing active stuff people tend to love. At OH, they had Unity Day in the past few weeks. And I believe this is a great way to show students that our district really cares about inclusion. And we do not want to encourage anything that would prevent us from achieving that. And I think by having the students dress up in orange is a great way for them to remember what it means to support inclusion and be against bullying, instead of just like lecturing them about why they should care about it. And I think that's something that we should carry on to the other schools of having Unity Day and make it a district-wide thing. At the middle school, they've had their courage retreat. And although I wasn't one of the high schoolers that went, of the people that went, they've told me they really liked it. And I think it's a great opportunity for middle schoolers to be able to be mentored by high schoolers that they look up to. So it's a way for us to build our community even more. They also have a new play coming up, and I think it started today. And there's a show tomorrow, and it's called Tales in the Haunted Library. And it's different than that book plays because it's actually taking place in their media center, which I think is pretty cool. In the high school, the volleyball team has put on the Spike Leukemia Event where they raised $4,000. And the student body was very, very involved in this fundraiser. I saw so many people during lunch walk up to the table and donate. And there were so many people at the volleyball game that like never went to a volleyball game before, but decided to go because they knew they were supporting a good cause. As far as sports, our boys soccer team are section champs, so that's something that we're all celebrating about. And now I'm gonna go into what are some things that we are looking forward to in our district. So at Wildwood, they have the Wildwood Artist Series, which is a fun musical performance. That's for anyone with kids, and I would really recommend people to go to it. They also have the kindness challenge. And when I think back to elementary school, and when I think back to when my school did something similar to it, I always thought it was super fun to have these type of events because it was an easy way for you to be kind to your peers, especially since there's an incentive, which I guess convinces the kids to be nice to each other. And at the middle school, they're honoring Veterans Day by displaying pictures of veterans and their families, which is a great way to interact with the middle schoolers and show them the importance of this holiday. At the high school, we have a few events coming up. The first one is next month, and it's the Blood Drive. So NHS is partnering with the Memorial Blood Bank. And our goal of this year is to give 50 units of blood. Any community member is encouraged to donate, and a lot of students end up donating to this event. And all of the information is soon going to be posted in the upcoming e-newsletter. So if anyone's interested, they can come to the high school and donate blood. The high school is also putting on the Mean Girls Play, which is their fun musical reenactment of the popular Mean Girls movie. And because that movie was so popular, so many people in the high school want to go to the play. And the last thing is that our girls cross-country team is going to state, which is something to be very proud of. So that's what I have.
Thank you. Questions? Okay. Oh, go ahead.
I really appreciate the way you framed Unity Day in terms of inclusion. Because a lot of that work comes out of legislation around bullying, which is a very negative way to look at the world, I feel like, where you're framing that in a very different, more positive way, inclusion. So I really appreciate your framing of what's happening in our district because we're really working on inclusion. And instead of talking about the bullying part, we're talking about the good parts of the work that we do. So I really appreciate the way you frame that, thank you so much.
So I will share with you just some things that have been happening around the district in the news and upcoming events. So since we were together last, we have had homecoming. And I know I saw most of you there, I think, at some point during the week. And you see here our pictures, one of our favorite events is when our high school students go over to the elementary's and spend some time and sign autographs and play and just build those connections, so that's. We had our walking school bus with Safe Routes to School. So a number of us made it out there to walk together to school. This is an initiative from our Safe Routes to School. So we did one last year in the spring, we did it again this fall. I assume we'll do it again next spring, and we were up to 50 students this time, which was an increase from last time we went.
The mayor.
The mayor came, and that is, we also have one of our, our, from city council, from Willerney City Council also joined us this time. Kate Seaver, I think that's her last name, and I'm sorry, it's been a while since I saw her. So, yes, so that was a fun, that was a fun event. We also had our Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flannigan came to visit and the high school. And students who are in English 11 had the opportunity to come and hear her speak. They're doing a project around new legislation regarding incorporating, incorporating curriculum. So Indigenous Peoples, this is talking about Indigenous Peoples' Day, but also there is, there are new updates to standards where we are new resources throughout the curriculum. And so our students were tasked with going to, if they chose to do this project, where to go to their teachers and say, "What kinds of resources do you want? What are you looking for?", and then try and find some resources to help their, their teachers. Because everyone's going to need some new resources to meet those standards across the curriculum. So then they also had an opportunity to hear Lieutenant Governor speak for them as well. So Community Ed, we had a, this is what's been happening in Community Ed, I guess, this fall here. With 50, we had 50 students, middle school students who are in the cross-country program. So I don't know about you, but getting 50 middle school students to run cross-country, I think is quite something, you know, to run for a long distance. But I do know that having a child who participated, I do know it's a really fun, a fun time and a very social time as well. So it's not all running, but it is, it's pretty remarkable that we had 50 students participate in that. And of course, there are always the community luncheon, so if you haven't been to a community luncheon, I encourage you to watch for the next one. When is our next community luncheon, do you know what that is? December 4th is our next community luncheon, open to everyone. And it's always a fun time to socialize and meet some, some people in the community you might not otherwise see at events. You may have been, if you've been tracking this, we've had a number of our Zephyrs in the news recently. In both the White Bear Lake Magazine and also the White Bear Press, you see Amal and you see Sam there, who have been in the local news. And then also are, you heard Fatima talk about. And then also our, you heard Fatima talk about our high school volleyball event. And so that, that event or a story about, about that event was on Fox 9 recently as well. And there are links to all of those. Upcoming events we have here, just a reminder about the Fall Fun Drive, also the Music Faculty Concert and Maderita is coming up. We have a new dyslexia support presentation that just, I saw that just come out recently and announced been about that. And something to highlight here, this new, this Zephyr District-wide Service Project. This is something new this year where all of our schools are going to be engaged in a a service project together. So it's going to be district-wide and there'll be more information coming out about that, I think, this weekend in the district e-news as well. I also wanna highlight the Zephyr Learning Showcase on, on the, on the 16th as well. So be ready for that. And with that, I think that is everything I've got.
Zephyr. Alright, thank you. Next is our board member calendar. Let's see, you just called out our Zephyr Learning Showcase, but I don't, do I see it on here? Okay. Does anyone wanna call out anything else on the calendar? Director Payne?
So Leslie has been registering people who are interested in the AMSD Conference on November 9th. That's coming up. It's gonna be a very good conference, a lot of planning has gone into that. It's a nice cross-section of student-centered learning and AI and how that impacts teaching and learning. So should be really interesting. There's some keynote speakers, but there's also a chance for other districts in the metro area to share the work they're doing in this space. So it's really nice to hear from those other districts to see what's happening in other schools because oftentimes around the board table, you're all still asking, well, I wonder what our comparison districts are doing? And this is your opportunity to go see that and talk to the other building and district leaders, leaders and school board members in terms of how they're accomplishing some of that work. So I strongly encourage you to attend. I will be there all day. So if you're there and you'd like to have lunch, sit with me.
Other call-outs.
I just want to call out for you, based on our conversation last time, you'll notice Thursday, December 7th, there's a copy and conversation scheduled before the board meeting.
Task force updates.
So I am going to walk through some of the things I'm going to talk about. We talked about last time during the study session, but I'm just, because for those who might be watching from home, I'm just going to go over a few, some of the backgrounds that got us where we are. Then I'll talk to you a little bit about what's come out of the Facilities Task Force in terms of recommendation and I'll ask those board members who are on the Facilities Committee, this is your, this is a prompt so that you're thinking about it, to jump in a little bit later too and, and add whatever I might have missed. We had our final meeting last night and so what I've put together, I think, represents what was talked about at that meeting and, but we haven't talked about it since that meeting. So there might be some things I've missed. So just as a reminder, back in February, there were some things, concerns that were reviewed by the Board Facilities Committee that prompted this facilities review. So we talked back in February about not having enough spaces for extracurricular activities and having to turn away students and organizations because there's not enough room in our, with our facilities. The cost to keep up our natural fields are drastically increasing. High school, we also talked about high school and OHA really lacking that flexible learning space because of the, the age of their building and the way it was designed for the time. We also at OHA, we really lack those learning spaces to support the smaller groups, the special education intervention and the specialists. Talked about needing improved secure entrances at the middle school, high school and BEC, poor traffic flow in the north wing of the high school, needing to look at upgrades and repairs to the Chautauqua and really wanting to modernize and improve learning spaces at the high school to, to really support those post-secondary pathways that we've been talking about building. So these were some things that came up that prompted the, the school board to request the facility study. So we enlisted the helpful architects to do that. And from March to July, they did that data gathering, looked at the facility condition. They began the input process during that time. During, then we called together a task force and that task force started meeting in August through October and really looking at the concerns, getting some more information from, some financial information, talked about, looked at some options of what we could do potentially regarding the concerns, reviewing those potential solutions. And their job was really to prepare a recommendation for the school board. So for you, we're in this November to December time, so we're going to share with you this information from the task force. And you can, from this recommendation, then we're going to also talk in, probably in December, we'll be getting some more information in terms of surveys and some other studies. I'll talk to you about that. And then if you were to choose, and notice in the top left corner there, it says that any decision to go out for an election or for any kind of request from the community is up to you as a board. But if that were the case and you wanted to go, go out at some point to address some of these things through a levy, just note that it needs to be decided at least 130 days prior to that election because of all that needs to happen in terms of meeting deadlines and requirements and things. So I just want you to have that in your head as we talk about all of this. So just again, to really talk, to show that there were a lot of listening sessions that went into this in terms of just really meeting with the people who use the spaces and who are, who are there day-to-day, so the employees, but also talking with people who rent our facilities as well in this, in this conversation. We had Facilities Task Force meetings starting, again, starting August 23rd. Then on August 30th, we did walk all the facilities so that the committee could see what we were talking about in terms of what needed, needed upgrading, where our concerns were. Those are the dates. As a result, we worked through with this task force what our desired results were going to be, was really to help inform the board on this, on this master plan for facilities that will best serve the school district's educational and extracurricular goals, be financially attainable and sustainable, plan for stable enrollment. So not growing enrollment, just really planning for the stable enrollment, reflect the values and priorities of the community of Montomede Public Schools, provide district long-range facilities plan and cover anticipated needs for the next 10 years. So this was something that was reiterated last night is that when we make these pictures, it might be difficult to plan beyond that and really see what's going to happen 10 years, 10 years later. But at the very least, we should be thinking 10 years out. Recommend optimal use of facilities and support educational delivery along with the rationale for the recommendation. So this is what the task force was working with in terms of the desired results when looking through all the, all the options and potential solutions.
Anything else to add yet?
Doing great. In terms of the background, okay, so this is kind of our background. So from the master plan, this task force, the task force went through an activity of ranking, really looking at things in terms of the need, the cost, the priorities they had, the, based on the conversations. And there were a few things that kind of rose to the top and kind of combined a few of them in, in terms of the theme there, but safety and security upgrades. There were some buildings that had, like the middle school entrance, for example, is one that is a little bit of a bigger project than maybe other, other buildings. Looking at the OH Anderson Academic remodel and then looking at athletic additions. So I'm just writing it as multi-use court space, so expanding our court spaces. And also having a more modern fitness center or is, I'll just put that as just kind of in general, that was kind of the conversation. Also looking at our fields and having turf, more turf options and lights so that they can be used for a longer period of time and more teams can be able to use those fields. The, the task force also had some conversation about really looking, so let me back up a little bit. We are going to be, we've started down the path of getting, having a community survey so that you will have more information about what the, the community wants and supports. And so when we talk about doing that community survey, one of the things we'll do is kind of test these things that the task force has said, these are the things we think should be priorities. They also had conversation about the, you know, the hockey rink has come up a number of times. We know that that's something that has been a conversation in our, our community for a long time, as I may have mentioned to you, since the 80s, as far as, as far back as I've found. So this is a long, this has been a conversation for a long time. So task force is recommending that in, in this survey, that there's some question about the hockey rink and support. There also, there was also a conversation about some kind of community center with a walking track. The idea being that, you know, whenever, if we, whatever we think of in terms of our needs, thinking about it a little more broadly for more of a community impact. And then also music and theater remodeling and improvements is also another area that is a need and so, and would probably, there might be different groups that use our, our facilities differently that might have some, some ideas about what kinds of things they would like to see and improve. This was a group, had more people that participate in athletics and so that's another reason why we wanna make sure that we're asking the questions about, about music and theater and the Chautauqua in particular. So these were the priorities that the master, the task force is recommending after all the conversations that have been had. And it was more detailed in the conversations, but we thought we'd just leave it up at this, this high level at this point. And so, well, maybe I'll just go to the next slide, but I'll just tell you what we would, what would happen next, the additional information that you, we've talked about and you've requested. One would be to do this community survey and in the community survey, we've done these in the past. And so they have a standard set of questions that they ask to just kind of gauge the general support of the schools by the person that they're talking to and it ends up being about a half an hour phone survey. And then within that, they'll also ask questions about support for various facilities projects and the tax impact that accompanies that. So that is something that we've started down the path and we would do the community survey in November and have the results shared in December. And then you've also requested a demographic study that's currently underway. We are pulling data now and that demographic study looks at our enrollment history over time. It also has, I'm also working with the cities to pull housing, new housing that is, has happened over the past five years and then, and the types of housing and then also what's projected for the next five years in terms of new housing developments in our district. So just so you understand, that demographic study is not just looking at our enrollment is always also looking at potential for district residents. So those, that's all the information in terms of like a high-level update, but I didn't know if there were some other things that you wanted to be able to add? Questions that you might have from those people who are not on the task force?
I would just add that the, this was a very large group of people that were very engaged throughout the entire time that they met and it was a big commitment of time. Lots of ideas that were shared, lots of viewpoints, lots of perspectives. And the list of needs that was developed is a page long and the dollar sign is probably a page and a half long associated with that. So, you know, the key is really gonna be when, when we all see the, you know, the more detailed information, the key is gonna be balancing the needs today with what's affordable and really weighing that. And, and there's also a timeline that we have to be cognizant about as well. And I think there, it's gonna be a real challenge, you know, depending on what, you know, how the survey comes back and how the demographic study comes back. I mean, you look at the timing, we're gonna have to really think carefully about, you know, timing, how we move forward because it's gonna, gonna take a lot of, a lot of thought and discussion to really drill down to what, what we can do or what we, you know, what we could do or what we wanna do, so.
On the safety concerns, that was the first one you listed, is that, are those upgrades not part of our standard FTLM?
LTFM? Yeah, they are not. So some, some of them that are smaller could, can be, yes. But for example, the middle school entrance, what, is not. It is, it is much more expensive because it requires, our goal would be to have, to have it be an entrance where you immediately go into the office instead of being buzzed in from the office, you'd be buzzed into the office. And that requires some, some, similar to the high school, yep. So that require, and, and our other elementaries, right? Right? So, so that's the idea there. And so that's, that one is a more significant remodel that costs more to do that and whereas the others don't, don't necessarily cost as much, it just kind of depends on, on which, which one we're looking at, which part of that upgrade we would look at.
There's a price tag with that and there's that community input and so I appreciate that piece of it. And I appreciate the fact, Barb, that, that you're sharing this update with us now, but also saying there's more to be done. Because as I, as I think about it, you know, our number one priority is safety. So I appreciate that being on top. And then I see the OH, you know, because the next thing that we are very responsible for is academic achievement of our students and that OH piece is right up there with that. I appreciate the honesty in the makeup of the group being a very sports-oriented, athletics-oriented group and not understanding music and theater as much potentially. And so, you know, that feedback, I think, will be very important because we do have academic standards in music and theater that must be met that are academic standards. And so I'm hoping that we can get more information around that of why that would not be as important as fourth, third, fourth and fifth graders' learning, that this is also academic learning for high school students. And so I think the community input will help us understand that and that bigger, broader piece of that is a central part of our community with the Wildwood Artist Series and Maderita and so many other pieces that use that space and how important that is to us because a school district should be the center of a community and that theater space helps us make, makes us the center of our community by having the space to do that work. And right now, there are ADA compliance issues with that space and that concerns me because I did spend a good couple of months in a wheelchair and that is very difficult to walk into spaces or wheel into spaces and not be able to access them. So I appreciate the fact that we are going for additional information to fully understand the needs and then come back to this list at that point with that additional information because one group getting together gives us one perspective and that additional information, I think, will help us grow and understand what is most beneficial to the students and the community.
And I do wanna emphasize that we actually did have members of the, we did have members of the faculty, theater, music, who were part of the, and we did have somebody from the Wildwood Artist Series as part of the group. So to, just so, I just would want you to know that we did, we were cognizant of getting a number of people who had represented different points of view. It just so happens that we had more people who had, who knew the space, who were using our facilities due to athletics. And so there were more conversations there. But each of them had their own perspective on their own, like, so you see a number of different sports represented here. So there, there was one moment where they were all mentioning how many, how many students played the different sports, you know, so that we, just so that we all do, you know. So anyway, so it was the case that everyone was there because they, they know, I mean, the bottom line is our facilities do need, do need some attention. This is something that we, I, I recommend that we really look at and we work towards. The conversation really, I want us to be purposeful about it and I want us to be smart about it because it is intended to be. smart about it because it is intended to be, whatever our solution is, needs to be sustainable. And take care of our, our, our spaces, take care of what we need to do, but also know the impact on our community. So that's the intent, that was the intention of the task force so that they got a lot of that information and understood, understood what was being asked.
So I just want to say that I have really appreciated the process of this, that it's been multiple sessions and lots of great conversation. I look forward to the survey. I know that somebody gets that phone call and it might be a half an hour conversation. I hope people will pick that up and give us their honest feedback because we want to hear from all in the community. Whether you have kids in the schools, whether you just live in this community. It's important to hear everybody's, you know, thoughts and feelings on this. And, and to me, that's what I appreciated the most about this. I felt a little bit at times, kind of like I kept repeating myself, but I really wanted to make sure that as we talked about this, that we were like casting a very wide net to include all community members in this, whether you have kids in our district or whether you are, you know, someone living in our district who doesn't have kids or, or are your kids have grown up? Or maybe you're living here and you, you never had kids, whatever that might be as a community member. That's what makes us really great about being a small community, being a Zephyr. It takes on so many different, you know, pieces. And so I just think that the community input is going to be really important. I also think that the more we can bring our community into the schools and what this plan looks like, this was everything from all different grade levels to academic areas, to activities, to, you know, not just athletics. Again, it was everything to, but again, thinking that we bring the entire community in to what this looks like. And so there's a lot of moving parts here and I think the survey is going to be really telling. So I look forward to people responding to that. I hope when they get the phone call, they take the time and fill it out or not fill it out, but you know, give their responses. So, thank you.
Wasn't my point, but Kelly, I'll double down on that. Like, it is really important that the community participates and gives feedback now versus a year from now when a decision gets made. Like this is the opportunity to come out and do that. So please, Kelly, you make a great point. Please participate. Was there any consideration given to engaging the local municipalities that make up our district and figuring out ways to partner with them? We obviously have a very small, unique district and the school system ends up bearing the brunt of a lot of the community programs. So I, I wish I had better ideas, not just asking questions, but like, how do we partner better with the, the local cities to get their involvement?
So we invited them. So they've been a part. We've had a number of our cities be part of this conversation and have had additional conversations beyond the task force to, to exactly your point. So I don't have a really concrete answer for you, but I guess I would want you to know that quite a, a number of people who are on the task force and on our staff have been working on partnerships to see if there are other ways that we can, can look at getting some of these, these items done. So I, I would totally, I totally agree with you that in order to really get the things done that we really want to get done, we need partnerships in order to, to pull it off. For it all to be on the school district is really, really difficult, if not impossible. So.
Just add to that. And it's important not from, I, in my perspective, it's important not from a, you know, affordability standpoint, but it's also important from a community perspective because there's a number of things here that, that not only benefit the kids, it benefits the community as a whole. And personally, I don't, I don't think it should be on the backs of the school district a hundred percent to, you know, help fund assets that are benefiting all the communities that are part of this, part of this district. So I know there has been a lot, there has been a lot of work behind the scenes, reaching out to stakeholders to gauge their, their thoughts about partnering. And so that continues. And so, yeah, I, I really hope that we can get some help because in order to get it done, it's going to, going to take the village to get this done.
Well, and maybe part of the direction that you're going with that is like, if we're going to go down this path, let's make sure we do it properly, which is why we're doing our due diligence, obviously. So with that thought in mind, like, have we also considered making investments in facilities or areas that have a, a possibility to have some of that cost offset by, you know, revenues down the road, like a community center with a walking track. I assume that comes with a very large price tag, but there's potentially an opportunity to monetize that and help bring revenue into offset the cost or athletic fields. There's no, like in the winter, there's a lot of local clubs that need soccer fields and need football fields and all that kind of stuff. And I know our, our local communities around us charge money for access to those fields. Like, have we considered anything like that to help offset the costs?
We have not, so this community center with walking track came up in the conversations. It's not something that was initiated from the district. And so I will just say that if we did go down that path, we'd need some kind of business plan to really, if we were going to be serious about that, that we would, to your point, we would need more of a plan than at that time.
I could also comment. The real cost of those projects is building them, right? And they're, they are, they, they, they need to be looked at as investments from the community, communities because they don't make money. The, the money that gets charged for people to, you know, go to the community center or use a soccer field, it, it might offset a, a bit of operating costs, but that's really it. So unfortunately, that's the way you have, they have to look at it because they, they just don't make money at all.
Okay. So just to wrap up then, I'll just tell you that once we have some survey data, once we have some demographic data or the demographic study, we'll be back and to have some more conversation. I just want to, just again, whatever we decide moving forward, there are timelines that we're going to need to, to follow. And there's also a lot of work around, around whatever we decide to do. So I just want to make sure that you're paying attention to that part, that this is not going to be, be something we can move really quickly on without, without a lot of thought and planning. So.
Policies requiring multiple readings, second reading.
Right. So these, again, all of the policies that are listed here, both for the second reading and the first reading are based on changes from the last legislative session. These are all being, we're just, there were a lot of changes, a lot of policy changes, as you know. And so the policy committee has been just taking little bits at a time. And so I'll even just talk about both of these at the same time, just to let you know that all of these are based on legislative changes. But in terms of the second reading, I haven't heard anything since the first reading in terms of additional questions either from you or from the community. So I don't have anything to address there unless does, and the others are our first reading. So you may have questions. I don't know. I guess I should say, do you have any questions on any, I did, sorry. Do you have any questions on any of the policies?
I had a question on, it would have been the policy regarding curriculum review. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to what I'm looking for here. Bear with me, please. There was a section. Deleted. And I'm wondering if the policy committee had discussed the purpose of that being deleted. Here we go. It was number, number four. It's the policy, I'm sorry. Very bold. It's policy six sixteen.
Okay, thank you.
School district system accountability. Section five four has been struck. And I'm wondering, is that, was that legislative or what was the discussion or what's the, do we know the rationale behind the reasoning striking that?
Yeah. So that one is, it's because it is really prescriptive. And so then it was, it was, it was taken out of, of legislation because of that, because it's, but it still is addressed. Hold on, let me go back and see.
In which section again? I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
Four. The policies.
Policy six sixteen, section four.
Oh, you're, you're right. I, I did say that. I'm sorry.
I can't find it. There's no section five. I'm like, wow, you've got a different policy. That helps a lot. Thank you.
So which part of section four?
Part four.
Part four, four.
Advisor Committee shall, one possibly be compromised of.
Correct.
That paragraph. Okay. Thank you.
Without it a year ago.
No, that has not been. Well, it's the two thirds. The two thirds is part of the.
I know we've struggled, right?
Well, I think it's actually addressed somewhere else now too. This is what, yeah. So this is, so the district. Sorry. We may need to get back to you because we have had this conversation. And it has to do with thing, I know it has to do with where where it's been moved around. Yeah. Well, six oh three has the district advisory committee. Let me.
Recommend advisor committee. Terminology changes too, which we'll need to be double checked anyway. So it's really a good question, Paul, because was it, I think six oh three, it all turned to district advisory committee, but now in this policy we're finding district curriculum again. So we want to fix that change anyway. But I think you're right. I would look at six oh three.
I feel, I had this conversation. Did we look at six oh three as we had this conversation before? So Director Peterson had the same question.
I, yes, I had concerns with that right away, striking out all of those individual lines. It seems to me that just leads to being able to handpick, hmm, I'm going to take these three people and we're going to be the committee.
That at least two thirds of advisory committee members in six oh three.
And that was new language last year or so.
But can we keep in A, A through I? Can we keep that in?
Well, I think since this is just first reading.
This is first reading.
Do a comparison for us.
I can do a comparison and I'm going to just suggest because I, I believe it's because of, it's, I believe it's because it was written in a prescriptive way. And there are districts that were saying, does it need to be prescribed exactly that way? I, I think this is, I could be wrong, but I think this is right. And so I'll just say that it's possible that the board would have an opportunity to have a conversation about what you would like as the makeup of your, of the district advisory committee. Because I think this was written in a way that was prescribed and it doesn't need to be prescribed exactly that way. The two thirds does, I, is that in six oh three? Was it?
It's in six oh three, but the part four B of six oh three also talks about the makeup of the committee. And I think part of this was, we're talking about the makeup of committee in two different policies. And if we need to make a change, we'd have to go to two different places to make a change. And so in six oh three, it says that the district advisor committee, to the extent possible, and that's a key word because we can't force people to the table, shall reflect the diversity of the district and its school sites, include teachers, parents, support staff, students and other community residents. And provide translation to the extent appropriate and practical. Wherever possible, parents and other community residents shall compromise at least two thirds of the committee. So all those groups of people were put there. I think part of it is historically before Dr. Reichel was with our district, we struggled to have, to meet that makeup requirement. And so a lot of it comes from that history. I think now Dr. Reichel is able to meet the, that piece because of the type of work she's doing and the engagement she does with that group. But I don't think we want to define the committee two different times in two different policies. And so since we already have it approved and defined here, I would recommend we leave it out of this one. If we want to fix it, go back and fix this one. So we're not multiple definitions because it'll make Dr. Reichel crazy and our superintendent is suffering crazy, having to track all the places we define the exact same group of people. Just my opinion, something to think about.
To clarify, you think it should be back in six sixteen where it's marked red? No, move it to six oh three.
Already in six oh three. It's already there.
Okay.
In, in six oh three, in a broader sense though, so it doesn't say like one, one principle, it doesn't speak to that. It, it names the groups that need to be part of the committee, but it doesn't say how many, it doesn't. And then there's the two thirds, two thirds advisory. That's, it's section four of six oh three, letter B. So if, but I'll just go back again, because this is the conversation we had when we were talking about this. If the board does have opinions about what, you know, some specific part of this that you'd like to see the makeup be address a certain, I don't know, number of people in a very, in various groups, then, then that would be, you know, your prerogative, prerogative to, to have that conversation and give that feedback to us.
But I'm advocating that we make that change in six oh three and not what I'm saying, because it's already in six oh three. That's where MSBA has put it in their language pieces. And we think about updates and future legislative sessions, it would be in one singular place to make the, the work of the board more streamlined. And so I would recommend we keep the red line part here. And if we want to make those changes and add that detail, that the policy committee reviews six oh three again and make a recommendation to the board in that space.
And I would second, I'm not, not second that. I would agree with that. Sorry. I would, that was just a, that was just a wording. I would agree with that. And, and I really like how it's stated in the district curriculum advisory committee handbook. And so that is something that maybe we just want to take a look at because it's spelled out in much of the same way. And it seems redundant in both places and maybe a little confusing. So maybe we can look at that. It's pretty clear in there.
I'm looking at six oh three.
Yes. So everyone can just look at it and get it through straight.
And maybe the, if I could get a copy of the curriculum handbook too, maybe I, yeah, maybe. Oh, I, I don't need a hard copy. What do you, it's not like you to have a hard copy. Okay. I'll take that and I can add that too. Okay.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions or comments? Okay. Moving on to action items. We only have one item on that on that agenda. So approval of donations and grants for September twenty twenty three, totaling nine thousand three hundred and fifty eight dollars and seventy seven cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
By Director Regan.
Second.
Seconded by Director Domon. Discussion. All donations and grants are greatly appreciated. The use of the funds will be to further the mission of the school, school district and are used towards the wishes of the donors. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Or committee reports. AMSD, Director Payne.
So AMSD met on October sixth and started off with a student panel. We had four different high school students from different districts across the metro area. It was a wonderful panel. We love to hear the voices of students. And there is recording up of that on the AMSD website. So if you'd like to hear from the students, I thought AMSD did a very nice job in selecting a variety of students. We had some students who were very interested in college prep kinds of things. And we had some other students who were very much in the CTE space and others looking at education opportunities outside the K twelve buildings in terms of one student was in a real estate course outside the regular school day, which I thought was very interesting and, and leads to some of the things we're advocating for. It is well worth the time to watch the first part of that meeting. The student panel was the first half hour, forty five minutes on that recording.
Is well worth the time to watch the first part of that meeting. The student panel was the first half hour forty five minutes on that recording. So questions that we asked that panel were things such as, what is the purpose of school? And what do you? When are you excited about learning? Which gave us a real insight into the kinds of experiences students would like us to have in our buildings. So I very much like that and would love to see our high school maybe do a panel like that for our public and others to think about. How are we meeting the needs of our students? What can we do differently to meet the needs of young people in in today's schools? So I really like that. It's worth watching. If you have an opportunity. We next approved some updated position papers. So AMSD, which we're members of, has on their website, the papers we just updated. We updated the Charter School Position Paper, the Compensatory Revenue Paper. Facilities mandate reduction and local control paper. So those are up there. Pelsby Board Staff came and gave updates. A lot of it was on the legislative changes that happened last session and the impact to licensure in districts. And so that was very helpful. The Executive Director gave a report in terms of the conference coming up on November ninth, which we've already talked to. And then shared a document that was shared with you at the study session. It was meant for tonight, but we got it early. But at the study session, when we were together, Leslie shared with you a document I asked her to share. About school finance because it's a very complex puzzle of how school finance works. And there's a nice summary paper there because there's this perception out in the greater community that we got. Additional money on the formula and that we should be all rich and wealthy now and be able to do all these things. But we had so many mandates, also with the REDACT and other spaces. We're not in as bad a shape as other districts I've talked to at some of these statewide meetings and things. But some of districts are having to dip into their reserve funds because it it's not meeting the needs because of all the mandates that came into play. So. When people say to you, oh, you've got all this money now. You've got two percent on the formula. Yes, but then we were told how we had to spend it. And that paper that Leslie gave to you last time from AMSD, it's also on their website. It's a very nice summary to understand that. Another piece I'll share with you that that wasn't at AMSD but is related to that is out. Every year, the House Research Committee puts out a document for legislators about the complexity of school finance. So I highly recommend everyone read if they haven't. How schools are funded through the Minnesota State Legislature's. How summary on school finance because you'll understand, you know, all the different funds that we have to address. You can have some really great conversations with the business manager. Or he can translate the document for you because sometimes I need that as well. But it's a really great reference because things are not as good as people think outside who aren't close to the work like we are financially. So, AMSD.
MAF, Director Regan.
Um, so MAF last met on September twenty fifth and. There were a number of things at that meeting that I'm just going to share some brief overview of some of those highlights, I guess. First of all. The meeting started with a presentation. About the care closets that are being established at all of the schools and. That MAF has helped support and fund. And one of the things that I took away from that was. Not only was that care closet a place that provides some basic essentials to help support students across the district. But also the way that our own students in the Passages Program are helping support the care closets. To be able to help shop for a lot of those things that go in the closet and talking about even having them figuring out with a budget and and working with. Genovinus and others to figuring out how this is how much money they have to spend. What are the best things to buy for this money? How to be really fiscally responsible and get more for their money, how to organize those items, how to fit that all in the vehicles they're hauling it back to the schools. Organizing them, categorizing for the different closets and then also those job skills of. The execution of just getting all of the things ready for that. So not only was it a great. Project around helping support student needs in our district, but also the job skills that it can provide for passages students. So. Lots of questions asked by the MAF Board about that and a lot of excitement about the project. Second of all, it was already mentioned earlier by Superintendent Dufferin, the Fall Fund Drive is underway. So that's from October twenty second through November twelfth. And be able to help support what's happening in our schools. So. That's a big fun drive for MAF in that happens this time of year. Uh, other other things I wanted to mention because you've probably seen MAF out and about. There's been so many different events they've been a part of. Unfortunately, the weather nick cooperated maybe as much as we'd hoped for, but on October fifth, there was the Zephyr Get Together out at Pine Tree Apple Orchard. And they were expecting close to four hundred people, I believe, to attend that event. It was a ton of fun. I volunteered out there and a number of us were out there. So MAF has been really wanted to get all families out there and have everybody welcome. That was free to families to attend. And lots of fun fall things happening out there. It was already mentioned by Fatima that there were some Wildwood Artist Series events that took place. I just wanted to call out that. The Shapeshift Dance Group, I had to say that very carefully. Took place on October seventh and October ninth was the United States Marine Band at St. Andrews, I believe. And I didn't go to that, so that I had a conflict. I was curious about how that was and. Other things. I feel like there's other things that I missed an important date, so let me look quickly at my notes.
Okay, can I add one to Wildwood Artist Series? One concert the Wildwood Artist Series puts on every year is the Music Faculty Come and Give a Concert, and that is Sunday this weekend coming up. And kids can wear their costumes to the concert and they can come see their teachers perform on stage, which is a lot of fun. And then all the funds from that go back to the schools to I can't remember goes to the Scholarship Fund or. To the music classrooms. But the money from tickets from that go directly to the schools, which is a wonderful piece. And the students love to see their music teacher up there doing the thing they teach them to do in their classroom. So it's a it's a great opportunity to go on Sunday.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing that. Um, I have two other things that I wanted to mention here, and that is, as was mentioned earlier in the presentation about homecoming, we saw MAF out and about at the Homecoming Parade. And one thing back to the Fall Fund Drive. They were they're hoping to. Well, some of the execution of things of that to really encourage participation from staff in the district is employees can enter in a drawing for a half day off. And I don't know if anything wants to be expanded on that. And there's going to be four winners. And so a prize in that drawing. And I believe that Superintendent Duffer might be involved in that.
I will be filling in and I have I do have Director Payne as my backup if I am. Needing to do something in the. With the preschool or kindergarten because as we know that wouldn't, you can picture how it would go. I just don't trust it. So I have I have backup there. So on that one. I worry. I worry for the children. So, yes, I I am the backup. I am going to be filling in for those people who win the the half day.
And I'm just gonna.
Our middle school.
Yeah. Yeah, because that would be really fun. I know what I'm doing there, but yeah.
But it's one per building. So that's a person for me.
Well, it's it's going to be it's going to be four district wide because we also have we have we have people at the district office who might. Who might win and we'll we'll just see what happens with that.
And I'll just throw this out there. This wasn't part of my plan, but I'll throw it out there that I I can't not license in kindergarten, but I am licensed seven through twelve. So. I could maybe take a day off and volunteer a half day of service for that as well. I mean, I would choose, you know, like a social studies like Orion Collins would be my first choice, but I certainly would go elsewhere, too. So. So that's exciting and also hoping that the school board can also contribute to the Fall Fund Drive if somebody feels as though that you want to contribute to that. Knowing that, put on your calendar, please, that November twelfth is right around the corner that that's going to be coming up. So that is my update from MAF.
Uh, let's see, MSBA, that's me. I don't have much to report. I do want to remind everyone that MSBA Coffee and Conversations are on Tuesdays. Other than that, that's it for now.
Do you know if there's still open seats for Delegate Assembly for our area? Last I looked, there were two or three seats for our area that were still open. Yeah.
That recently?
Well, whenever they said I'm a delegate, so I got it then. But that's the last I've seen and there's nothing on their website. I wasn't sure if you'd talked to the Government Relations Team to see about filling those seats or. Because if there's spots, it's a great opportunity for board members to volunteer. Friday nights, there's a great speaker usually. I believe it's Morris Leatherman again coming to speak about. Survey work they've done. And then we spend the next day with over a hundred school board members from across the state. Setting the legislative platform and priorities through the Delegate Assembly process. It's a great learning experience. We have had someone on the Delegate Assembly. I think, I mean, every year since I've been on the board, sometimes we've had two people. And so there was an opportunity for people to put their names forward and there's if there's still open seats, I highly recommend people put their names forward. Find out. I could just add it to notes.
Oh, perfect. I'll let you know. Okay, and then nine sixteen, Director Payne.
So nine sixteen, Leslie is always so kind to forward out the notes, but I want to highlight a couple of things. On September twenty seventh, we had nine sixteen Board Retreat. The nine sixteen Board is very different than this board because there are eleven of us, thirteen of us. There's a bunch of us, eleven of us coming together from all the districts. Then working in the Northeast Metro nine sixteen district. And then some of the rules shift and change because we don't have per pupil funding, which changes some of the budget work we do and and things like that. So it's very interesting work, but we don't know each other as well because we all live in the same communities. Some people are coming from Fridley, Columbia Heights, you know, South St. Paul. So we had a board retreat to really spend some time with each other, share a meal together, get to know each other, which helps at the board table quite a bit. So I appreciated that time with my fellow board members. On October fourth, we had our usual monthly meeting. We approved five policies to keep those moving forward again, similar to what we're doing with legislative changes. We had six more with the first read. That board does not work in the same committee structure we do, so they're able to move things differently compared to how we do. At the recognition time at the board, they did recognize the Amademi Day Academy, the ALC, which was nice to to hear about their work. And then we recognized an instructional assistant who's been with. The nine sixteen district for twenty eight years, retiring after twenty eight years as an instructional assistant or educational assistant, which is amazing, very passionate woman. They had a contract and grant funding to do some work with Carrie and we had a nice update on the MTSS report as Carrie came in and did that review. So. Oh, and we meet again November first next week.
Other board reports. Director Regan.
Um, I have a really quick update. Sorry, it's on my phone. October fifth, Curriculum Advisory met for the first time this year. Dr. Reichel did a great job bringing that group together to talk about, you know, the roles and responsibilities. There are a lot of new members this year on in that group. Secondly, we also, well, we spent the bulk of our meeting looking at the content from the World's Best Workforce. We got kind of the sneak peek. At that, which we heard about that this evening and prior to the board meeting and that presentation. Got to provide some feedback about some of the formatting and layout of that and like what would be more or what would be. I guess the format as far as usability of that content in there and how to be able to leverage that easier. For as a community member wants to look at that. And so we focused our time really talking about that, unpacking some of the information in there. What does it tell us about our district and so on? And then, let's see here, I want to see if there was anything else. And so that that group provided feedback to Dr. Reichel and she came to us tonight with that presentation. And I think that's about it. We really spent most of our time just looking at World's Best Workforce. So that was October fifth. That's it.
So it used to be called the Gift Advisory Committee. It is no longer called that. It is a working title, still in progress, I believe, that we are coming together with with better words, but on September twenty eighth, when we met at that point in time. It was called the Advanced Academic Parent Support Group. And so great name. I don't know. It's changed again since then, hasn't it? Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Academic Advanced Academic Parent Group. Yes, we don't need to support parents. We're supporting children. So I appreciate that clarification. Advanced Academic Parent Group. So that name change aligns better with the research in terms of of where we're working and the program we offer in our district. So I appreciate that recognition. And so it's very much more inclusive in terms of what we're doing. So we talked about roles and responsibilities again first meeting of the year, which is good for the new members on on that group. But the important thing to me is we talked about the vision of the group in terms of supporting the whole child, having a clearly defined identification process, clear communication with families. And then support for parents. So it's a big part of what we talked about. Our new direct, our new. Board staff member, I'm looking for her name, Catherine. Yes, Catherine was there and and supported, spent a lot of time talking to us about new initiatives. In terms of things happening through MAF grants, going back to an earlier report. Knowledgeable, Future City Competition, Spelling Bee, teacher training work that she's doing. And the number of things that are continuing from past years that your students. I've participated in Young Authors, Win Time, Accelerated Math Opportunities, Honors English, STEM Club, et cetera. Some of the programs we offer are open to all students and some are open to only students IDed through different methodologies. We talked a lot about cluster grouping of highly of kids who needed a support group of children more like them. We talked about opportunities for families. So there's opportunities out there to support. The math counts group in in terms of needing a coach. Then there were two conferences coming up. Minnesota Council for the Gifted, they're this, they're November tenth, usually that they're early November. So you'd have to look at their website. Right? They have to look at their website. As a parent, I have gone to that many times, a very good conference to go to. And then we spent a lot of time in the in the group talking about grows and glows. And so it gives the parents the opportunity to talk about things that we could do better, things we can grow in and the things that are going really well. And so there was a lot of talk about the OH book clubs accelerated about. Excited about the accelerated math programs, how much they enjoyed the win time and enrichment. Good positive words for our community ed and the enrichment opportunities they're offering our students. And then we ended the night with an opportunity to enrich ourselves through reading an article and growing in our own learning. And then connecting with each others through that reading. So it was a very well spent time and we meet again in December. I have a date somewhere. Eleven. And she's going to double check that, aren't you? That's what I have on my calendar, at least. I'll be there December eleventh unless I'm told otherwise.
Any others? Director Peterson.
I have two quick ones. PTO, they have a new website. They are. Totaling up all the fun run. They did get ten thousand dollars from community businesses donated to school. Teachers can now put in their fund requests and they are starting to get a list of those. And the big thing for the community and families is there is OHA Movie Night. On November tenth, bring blankets and pillows. You lay in the gym with a movie on the wall. And oh, and the fun fair is set for May seventeenth. Next is Community Ed. Uh, let's see, it was mentioned, but there will be a community lunch on. December fourth, that's catered by Donatelli's and the Amademi Day Glee Club will be singing for live entertainment. A big hit was, and we talked about it a lot, and it fits a little bit with our strategic plan, was the schools connecting more different grades, different ages. How the kids at OH and Wildwood light up when the. Through whatever Community Ed does or a program, the. Intergenerational ages getting together and how much the high schoolers love to play with the little kids and the little kids look up to the high schoolers. They have a very positive fun balance, which will lead to some MAC field trips. Looking forward to correct? Doing some, yep. I'm looking to put some money towards MAC field trip.
Essentially everything for this evening because now we're going into closed session. So. Can I get a? Motion to go into closed session?
I can't.
This meeting for discussion of labor negotiation strategies for development. This meeting for discussion of labor negotiation strategies for development in closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute. Thirteen D point oh three, teacher contract negotiations. All right, all those in favor, say aye. So we will empty out the room and then.